At this time, would you please join me in a moment of silence as we think about the items for more as the seat. Thank you. This time, if you'll rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
As we get into this evening, we do have public comments. We have quite a substantial number of those, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to suspend Policy Number 2310 that only limits our public comments to thirty minutes. There's a motion on the floor. Do I hear it second?
Second.
Thank you. The motion is made seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. The motion is approved. At this time, Dr. James Ryan will read the public comments.
Madam Chair. Michael Jones, AD Blake Boulevard, Pondhurst, North Carolina. Good evening, Board members. I want to thank you for all your hard work that you've been doing for teachers, staff, and students to keep us safe during these difficult times. First, I'd like to say that as a high school teacher, we've been working very hard to keep our students engaged each day when learning virtually. I understand that a push for students to come back to school is on the minds of a lot of people. I feel at this time for students to come back into school is definitely the wrong choice. If students would come back to school, you must remember we are on the front lines. Our health and safety would be at risk during this pandemic. I've witnessed students in groups outside of school not practicing the three Ws. My fear is that they are increasing the spread, which in turn, they would bring back into the school. Not only would it be a risk for us as teachers and our families, but also for our students. I urge you not to rush this decision and to keep high school learning virtually on Plan C. Bill Mulligan, 113 East Chisholm Street, Sanford. I commend the Board for having made tough decisions in the past regarding the pandemic and its effects on the education of our children. I'm a science teacher at Lee County High School, and this has been a difficult and not always rewarding year, despite the hard work my colleagues in administration and the efforts that the majority of my students have made to learn under trying circumstances. The question before you now is whether to send the high school students back under B schedule. I can imagine the pressure you are under to do something. Many of my students would probably take the opportunity to come back even under a limited schedule. Doing this would have no small amount of support. On the science, however, this seems like a questionable idea. I'm looking at the COVID dashboard as of Friday, January 8th, and the trends are terrible. Since October 5, 2020, we have had only forty-eight students reported positive with COVID, but sixteen, fully one-third of the total, came just in the last week. We've had sixty-nine staff members in total test positive, and twenty-five of them as a full three-sixty-five of the total were from last week. This is a disastrous trend if it continues. Lee County as a whole is returning to a COVID test positivity rate of around seventeen percent. The last I looked, a higher number than when the decision was made to send all schools home, all students home. Again, you have my full sympathies, and any decision you make will be second-guessed by people who'd not have to worry about being publicly proven wrong. It's my opinion that now is exactly that. Don Bevieu, 1600 Matty Road. Author Emily Carroll says, "You must travel through those woods again and again, and you must be lucky to avoid the wolf every time. But remember, the wolf only needs enough luck to find you once. Our schools travel those woods daily. So far, we've avoided the wolf. How long can we be lucky?" North Carolina teachers John Crawl and Julie Davis fell to the wolf. Jamie Sykes, beloved North Carolina coach, was a victim. His wife says he always wore a mask and followed all guidelines when returning to in-person teaching. She says besides school, he only went to get groceries, yet look at the outcome. How much will we gamble with help so close? No harm has come to our schools yet, but yet is a powerful word. It implies more to come. Our county is critical. Cases multiply. Dr. Fauci, disease expert, says, quote, "If you're fighting a battle and the cavalry is on the way, you don't stop shooting. You keep going until the cavalry gets there." I taught twenty years at the LCHS. I love my students and my eighth-grade daughter. I love them more than my desire to have them learn Shakespeare. I love them more than high math grades. I want them alive and healthy, and when this is over, I'll repair academic loss. James, Buffalo Church Road. I would like answers as to how Mrs. Womack was so concerned about opening schools and mask-wearing, but yet she is in Washington, DC without a mask and hugging people. Chair Smith, Wedgewood Way. Please think about keeping students at the high school level home through second semester. Durham has made the choice to do so, and many counties have decided to keep them home through March at least. The numbers are rising daily with Lee County in a critical zone in North Carolina with ten thousand-plus new cases per day. I don't see how it is smart to send teachers and students into the buildings. There's already a shortage of subs. What is the plan when teachers have to quarantine? What is going to happen to the level of education? Please think about keeping high school students home for a while longer. It's just not safe. Scott Van Smith, 1051 Hollywood Road. Good evening. I'm a fourth-grade teacher in Lee County Schools, and I want to thank all the teachers for their hard work during this crazy time. My students, who have chosen to come to school in person, are thriving and performing dramatically better in person than they would if they were forced to learn online only. During the week while I am teaching, I have had students who are virtual personally tell me, when I am teaching, that they are confused with a certain topic, that they knew they would understand better when they came in person later on in the week. I don't teach them any differently when they come in person. This just goes to show that with the many distractions at home and not being in person to directly ask their teacher a question and get the help that they need, that virtual learning is not ideal. Ideally, I would love to have all of my students who choose to come in person be allowed to come all four days per week. I do not know what the Board is going to decide, or what the groups that they have been in talks with have shared about our safety precautions in place, but please at the very minimum allow the kids who have chosen to move from virtual learning to in-person learning to do so. And do not move us to all virtual learning in Plan C. We have the safety precautions in place, and it is our job to make sure that they are met while also meeting the needs of our children. Thank you. Tracy Tadlock, 272 Glendale Circle. Yes, if our country is in the red now, it is not safe for any one kid. Sandy Shover, Lee, NCAE President, 2730 Waters Edge Drive. As of Saturday, the positive case rate in Lee County has climbed to seventeen-point-six percent. Our county is in the red zone of critical risk for transmission and overwhelming local health resources. Yes, our school system is trying very hard to maintain a safe learning environment for students and a safe working environment for staff. However, the increasing transmission rates make them an ever-more challenging proposition as has been reported that school infection rates tend to mirror the community. My own thirteen-year-old daughter, a virtual student, had an asymptomatic case of COVID following an exposure from a group of her peers in a setting that was practicing appropriate precautions. We had her tested out of caution, but since she never showed a single symptom, she could have easily spread the virus. Plus, based on the criteria used by the school system, we wouldn't have been notified of her potential exposure. COVID doesn't always respect the rules. We need to shut down as much as possible until staff can be vaccinated and our community transmission rates get under control. I just returned to my classroom on January 7th after quarantining since December 13th. While I am thankful I did not contract the virus through my daughter's exposure, it shows that even one case of COVID in an LCS employee household will lead to twenty-four days of quarantine, which could have been even longer had I or anyone else in my home gotten sick. If staff can't come in the building when students will be there, we have an obvious problem. It is made worse by the CARES Act leave no longer being available. Nancy Fluke, 961 South Bay Drive. I respectfully implore you to reconsider sending more students back to school. As of January 7th, the NCDHHS reports fourteen-point-eight percent positive tests in the state of North Carolina. Lee County is at a seventeen-point-six percent positive rate. You must take immediate action to help curb the spread of this virus. I'm a thirty-eight-year veteran of the teaching profession. As a retiree, I have the privilege of having my nephews at my home to do their virtual schooling. I cannot say enough about the quality of education that they are receiving from their Greenwood teachers. Each student is made to feel very much a part of the classroom. Their teachers are able to respond to them in real time. Their teachers are able to see immediate responses from every student through their white boards and through verbal interaction. This is the very best thing next to being in the actual classroom. The benefit of virtual education is the protection of students, teachers, and their families from additional exposure to this virus in this increasing situation in Lee County. As a retired science teacher and guidance counselor, I am concerned with the science. The Hartford Gazette in August of 2020 expressed their concern that we have reached the erroneous conclusion that the vast majority of people infected are adults. They expressed the concern that children, while asymptomatic, carry higher viral loads for COVID-19, the most adults showing mild symptoms. Therefore, it is apparent that children are truly carriers. Jana Ritter-Hurt, 1485 Albrecht Lane. I personally think that taking a few weeks of virtual learning will be as beneficial as the COVID-19 numbers continue to rise. As an elementary school teacher who had a very mild case of COVID, I don't wish it on anyone. I know many reports have said students are on an A/B schedule, but this is not the case for K-2 students who are in person four days a week and staff who are in person five days a week. We need to do our part and help reduce the numbers by keeping students at home for a few weeks. Adair Thomas, John Rossel wrote. Let me begin by saying thank you to Dr. Lynn Smith and Patrick Kelly for responding to my email that was sent out last Monday, January 4th, expressing my concerns as a teacher and for students. At the point of this comment, the positive percentage in Lee County is seventeen-point-six percent. Our county is in a critical community spread, is in critical community spread. As a teacher who was an advocate for in-person learning in August, the metrics stated otherwise, and I understood the need for safety measures for students and staff. The metrics had to be five percent or below. Please explain why we're still seeing in classrooms five to six hours a day with little to no breaks other than recess if the weather is permissible and specials with poor ventilation in classes. Are we not following metric guidelines anymore? Are you going off of a political agenda? Are you basing on what other counties are doing and not basing it off what is happening here in Lee County? I see the weekly updates from the Health Department. These times, the numbers are growing. The Lee County dashboard has increased with each passing day for students and staff positive cases. I am in constant worry if I'm not, if I am going to get a call from my principal stating that one of my students is sick, and I will have to quarantine due to exposure. I also have young children at home who I can bring this home to as well and won't have to quarantine as well. I feel the return to Plan C would be a more beneficial move until the metrics are safe for return to in-person learning as they were in October at or below five percent. Please consider not only the students, but the staff. Elisa Nicole Martin, 4361 Farrow Road. I am an eleventh-grade student at Lee County High School. I am extremely disgusted by the actions of Sherilyn Womack and her participation in the assault on Capitol Hill. It is very sad to know that she is a representative of our county's Board of Education. When you are held in a position of public trust, you have the responsibility to represent all communities, including blacks. Her participation in this riot was a clear representation of a leader who stands for hatred, oppression against minorities, and a symbol of racism, meaning she shares the same ideology and values as the riot symbolized. I demand her immediate resignation from the Lee County Board of Education because the actions she has taken makes me feel unsafe. Julian Martin, 1015 Steelbridge Road, Sanford. I'm calling for an immediate removal of Sherilyn Womack from the Lee County School Board with her actions that transpired in Washington, DC on last week. She is unfit to serve as an elected official where she helps to make decisions on black and brown students in Lee County. Policy Code 2220, official school spokesperson. The official spokespersons of the school district shall be the chairperson of the board designated and superintendent or superintendent's designated. Any person speaking in an official capacity shall conduct his or her assignment to the standpoint of the best interest of the board, school district, or the community, not as representative of his or her own personal ideas or feelings. In addition, the superintendent and other school employees who are called on to speak in their official capacities as employees of the school system shall communicate the position of the school board when asked to comment on legislative, policy, or political issues. When reasonable, the superintendent shall inform the board members prior to public appearances with the media. Legal references GS 115C-36-276. Cross-references Board Authority and Duties, Policy 1010, Board and Superintendent Relations, Policy 2010, Code of Ethics for School Board Members, Policy 2120, issued April 16, 2001, December 13, 2016, May 9, 2017. Cindy McGee, 110 Gadwall Lane. I am dismayed that you are crucifying the board member for their political beliefs. I heard that many attacks have been made towards Sherilyn Womack because she supported the president in a peaceful march in January. She is wonderful to the teachers and students in Lee County and tries to ensure your county gets top ratings. No one deserves to be slandered over an outside event that should be taught as history in our books. Are you for teaching American history? She lived it and did nothing wrong. How many of you stood up for your government D or R by sharing your constitutional rights? You sound jealous of her, and should be praising her rather than demeaning her. Cancel culture is socialist and not what Lee County schools should be setting as an example for their students. They should be taught that bullying is wrong. You are currently the biggest bully in the room. Shame on you in your attempts to silence diversity of thought. Samuel Robbins Benton, 549 Summit Drive. You shouldn't be able to hold a government position if you are present for an attempted coup against the government. Thayla Williams, 1079 Black Road. Sherilyn Womack needs to be removed. Be removed the school board immediately. Do your involvement in the act of terrorism and violence at the U.S. Capitol on January 6th. Rashawn Andrews, 3920 Poplar Springs Church Road. Due to the increase in COVID cases of the younger generation, my children will not be returning to school in person till the pandemic is over. Angel Jernigan, 3920 Poplar Springs Church Road. That's continued. Due to the increase in the COVID-19, the younger generation, my children will not return to school. Sorry for the repeat. Madam Chair. Mary Al Cool, 1509 Wernlockin Drive. Sherilyn Womack should not be forced to resign unless it is confirmed she was part of the crowd of terrorists that entered our nation's Capitol Building. As Americans, we have the right to protest peacefully. She should not be punished for exercising her God-given right. Leslie Salgado, 1821 Spring Lane. I speak out as a student who attends one of the Lee County schools that you should recognize the unruly choice and actions one of the members of the Board of Education, Sherilyn Womack. I demand that you, as a decent human being, terminate her seat on the board as it is seen unfit to our community. TJ Johnson, 338 Farrow Road. I am a student who attends Lee County High School requesting the resignation of Sherilyn Womack. Madison Schoolly, 1263 Pickett Road. Sherilyn Womack should be forced to resign as she endorsed in terrorism that took place under Sherilyn Womack. Jade McNeil, 258 East Humber Street. Sherilyn Womack needs to be removed. She participated with the attack on the Capitol. That does not make the board look good. Neveah Matthews, Sanford. I personally think I have someone that runs for inequality on our school board, excuse me. I personally think having someone that runs for inequality on our school board, or at least the Republican Party, that does not stand by with equality even when most of the public schools and a percent of private schools make up people of color. Now, this is coming from someone who is white, is a Christian, is straight, and does go to a private school. I know many may not have the same opportunity in this meeting. Kayden Lee, 223 Elm Street. I don't think any kids should go back because COVID is just going to get worse and worse. Juan Castillo, 903 Merchant's Court. What is Sherilyn Womack doing on the Lee County BOE if she was in Washington during the attack on the Capitol? This does not sit right with me, knowing that a person with intentions such as Sherilyn Womack should sit in such a position. She is unfit. This is unreal. We should not sit here and allow people like her contribute or influence the youth of Lee County. This is very upsetting, and I truly hope that the Lee County Board of Education has some level of respect or decency for students who are people of color by dismissing or making Sherilyn Womack face consequences. I feel disgusted. Sophia Castillo, 903 Merchant's Court. I'm calling for the resignation of Sherilyn Womack. She was one of the participants in the domestic terrorist attack on the Capitol. Hugo Cabera, resign Sherilyn Womack. Alicia Hancock, 1205 Land Circle. I'm a tenth-grade student at Lee County High School requesting the resignation of Sherilyn Jaden Marshall, 118 Rod Sullivan Road. Please read thoroughly. I am a student who attends Lee County High School requesting the resignation of Sherilyn Womack. That riot or what they call protest was nothing but a representation of hate. As a student, I don't want someone that represents hate on the school board. Ms. Womack should also act as a leader and should not be attending an event thus going against the CDC and our local government guidelines and coming back home to spread the virus. She has posted pictures on her personal social media account at the event, and she was not wearing any personal protection gear. I hope she has been in quarantine since her return to Sanford. Alessandra Mesa, 812 South Parkway. I'm a tenth-grade student who attends Lee County High School requesting the resignation of Sherilyn Womack. Diamond Hancock, 1205 Land Circle. I'm the sibling of a student and alumni from the Lee County Schools, and I'm requesting Sherilyn Womack resigns. Rihanna Williams, 378 Brant Street. Out of curiosity, can you explain to those present the reasoning for traveling across the country to protest against a fair election amidst a global pandemic in a high-risk state? What message would you say that gives to your students? Olivia Joy Oliveria, 230 Palace Green Lane. First of all, we need to get rid of the zero tolerance policy because it's lazy. It doesn't truly help anyone increase the likelihood of students dropping out. Literally, college high school needs an actual building, not a trailer. It's unsafe, especially in the event of an emergency. LGBTQ-inclusive education is a must, particularly in health and history classes. And finally, I am concerned about Sherilyn Womack being on the Board of Education, given the fact that she was present in the terrorist attack upon our nation's Capitol on January 6th of this year. Alexa Perez, 407 North Steel Street. What Sherilyn Womack did is unacceptable and should be fired from her position. No leader should have encouraged what happened in DC, let alone participate in it. Manuel Alejandro Sanchez Garcia, 547 Bracken Street. As a gay Latino student living in this community, I condemn Sherilyn's actions and don't believe that she is fit to be a member of our Board of Education. Patricia Harrington, 607 Singing Angels Church Road. As a representative of the Board of Education, the inability of using good judgment was not one of the characters that Sherilyn displayed, even though it was a so-called peaceful match violence was going to happen because of the racial divide and the wrath on our president. As a member of the Board, she should have never been there. Because of her actions, she should resign from the BOE immediately. Elizabeth Lessick, 2800 Cameron Drive. Sherilyn Womack, who participated in the assault on the Capitol, needs to lose her job now. Also, too many students are getting away with same slurs that they cannot reclaim or harm many people by doing this. LGBTQ-plus people, POC, and neurodivergent people are the ones being harmed by other same slurs. Please stop letting the students get away with it and make schools a safe place for everyone. Amy Rollser, 2104 Wolf Trap Place. Good evening. I want to jump right in and ask that you consider Plan C for many reasons. First and foremost, our positivity rate is seventeen-point-nine percent. This is considerably higher than it was this summer when the Board chose for us to do Plan C, because it was the safest option and still the safest option. The state and CDC recommend coming back to in-person school when the positivity rate is five and ten percent. Lee County has been well above both these numbers for many weeks now and still continue to rise. I would also like to point out that Durham schools just went to Plan C because their positivity rate was seven percent, and they were not comfortable being anything above four percent and sending their staff to work. The numbers are alarming. Last week, thirty staff members tested positive for COVID-19 and seventy-three staff were quarantined. Please go back to Plan C for the next six to eight weeks and then reevaluate. We've not even experienced the surge from New Year's celebrations yet. Thank you. Deja Henry, 2025 Fairview Lane. I'm an eleventh-grade student who attends Lee County High School requesting the resignation of Sherilyn Womack. I saw that she was involved with the rioting at the Capitol Building. It concerns me. Brielle Norton, 1132 Metro School Road. I believe that what Ms. Sherilyn Womack did last week is unacceptable behavior of someone who has a say of the decisions that will be made by the Board of Education, and she needs to have her actions used against her. She needs to know what she did is unacceptable. Kelly Clue, 108 Cricket Park Road. I find the current situation in Lee County extremely troubling. As of Monday, 1/11 morning, according to data, our cases per one-hundred-thousand residents are now one-thousand-one-hundred-twenty-one-point-seven, which is above the average for North Carolina, one-zero-one-one-point-two, and the U.S., nine-nine-seven-point-nine, source COVID-19 local news. In addition, our testing positivity rate is now seventeen percent, higher than it was when schools were closed in the spring, source NCDHHS. While we have learned more about the virus and protocols that prevent major outbreaks in schools, last week we saw spiking cases. According to the LCS dashboard, last week, there were thirty teachers listed as positive cases. When you consider there were only seventy-four staff cases listed cumulatively since 10:05, this is a significant jump. I appreciate the school system as giving parents options, allowing those who want to send their children to school to do so, and those who do not, to allow their children to attend virtually. Teachers and support staff who are more resistant to children and do not all have the option to teach remotely are now in a precarious position. With such significant and increasing community spread, I ask the school board to carefully consider the best ways to keep both our students and our teachers safe. Perhaps a temporary return to virtual learning would be worth reconsidering, at least until after the surge results from the holidays subsides. Grace Nelson, Broadway, North Carolina. I would just like to go to school right now because the numbers of COVID-19 have increased, and I've personally been affected because one of my family members taught COVID from Brandy Morton, 410 North Gulf Street. If classes are virtual on Wednesdays, yet teachers and staff are required to be in the building, how are the schools supposed to be deep cleaned during that time when other people are in the building? You're giving the illusion to parents whose children are in person that the schools will be deep cleaned during the Wednesdays, yet I am unsure as to how that is possible when staff is still required to be in the buildings. Are the foggers even being used inside the schools, and if so, how can the staff is required to be there as well? Emily Hawkins, 615 Buffalo Avenue. I'm a teacher in Lee County Schools. As you discussed the possibility of different plans, A, B, or C, I ask that if the Board decides to move to Plan A, that the Board considers keeping Wednesday a workday for teachers and a virtual learning day for students. Many teachers use Wednesday as planned for both virtual and in-person instruction. It'd be difficult, very difficult, to continue to plan for both in-person students and virtual students without the Wednesday workday. Thank you. Emily G., 1708 Nash Street. Sherilyn Womack is a racist. I, among hundreds of others, demand her resignation. The students are her job, but we don't want her, and I know she doesn't care about the town, about the brown and black students. Resign. This school is full of hillbillies that don't wear masks. I will not be going to a school with the deadly virus with people who I know will not be put, will not put the mask over their nose. Don't be selfish. Keep us virtual. Harley Schoolly, 1126 Woodridge Trail. Sherilyn Womack attended the terrorist attack on the Capitol that took place January 6th. For someone who's been so blatantly shown the racism still meaning the school board is unjust, the school board is supposed to represent all children who attend schools to remove Womack, who has showed her true colors, to be anti-black. Jackie Valbrock, 3044 Creep Run. I think schools should stay virtual. There's been an increase in COVID cases, and as a student, I don't feel comfortable going back to school. I'd rather wait till vaccines are made available to students and teachers to return to school than risk catching the virus. I understand it may be hard for people to work online, but the students of Lee County are resilient. Coming from a student's perspective, I would feel extremely guilty if I spread COVID to a classmate, teacher, or my family. Thank you and have a nice day. Carolina McCosco, 2512 Watson Avenue. It is unacceptable to have someone that represents the interests of African-American Hispanic students, who also shares the ideals and hateful rhetoric that a political figure stands for and spreads. Sherilyn Womack is irresponsible. The fact that she is following a baseless claim of suspected voter fraud The fact that she is following a baseless claim of suspected voter fraud and decided to participate in a violent assault against democracy is a representation of her lack of judgment that I do not feel comfortable allowing her to continue in her position of power. As a student of Lee County with younger siblings, I do not wish for someone like Sheri Womack to be in charge of my and their education. And if she has any respect for the minority community, she needs to resign. Hassley Fajardo, Darunthole Street. Ms. Womack is clearly, is clearly irresponsible as serving our school board. To stand by Trump during these times like this is neglect all students, from minority groups, students in the LGBTQ community. She clearly does not care about making schools a safe place for all. Samantha Bowles, four one four Portland Drive. Hello, I'm a fourth-year biology teacher at LCHS. I'm writing this comment after analyzing scores from my students on Biology U of C this past semester, fall twenty twenty, in which we were completely virtual. Many people think that virtual learning is not allowing our students' learning grades to their fullest potential. And to be honest, I thought the same thing. It was hard for me to wrap my head around teaching science without students being able to learn hands-on with labs and other activities. However, my colleagues and I have been very creative in creating alternatives for this. Back to the point, our students grew substantially. I had many students who were proficient, but even those who were not, who were not close to the mark and based on the EVOs data, most performed better than expected. I personally had an EC student who grew twenty-one percentile. I think that is something to celebrate and I think that speaks to the resilience and adaptive ability of our students, even under these circumstances. Our students are capable of so much more than we give them credit for, whether they are physically in the classroom or not. Kalis McLeod, two zero four seven Pathway Drive, Department B. Ms. Womack attended and participated in the attack on our nation's Capitol. I know we all have our own beliefs and that's fine, but to participate in such a savage attack on our nation's Capitol is truly disrespectful to Americans everywhere. Savannah Ralser, one seven three five. I think we should go back to school because a lot of us students are already struggling with having to do school at home. I think if we did a schedule by grades, it would be better because we would have a chance to ask the teachers questions in person and some people are taking classes that require us to be in class to actually learn something. Aiden Roni, three two zero five Foggy Mountain Loop. Me and all my peers currently need to be in person class, online school promotes cheating. Shannon Bloxum, five one eight seven Cox Mill Road. Please open the schools full-time for all students. Alexis Adams, one zero nine Willow Ridge Drive. Sherilyn Womack needs to be removed immediately. She participated in the riot at the Capitol. A woman like this cannot be speaking for minority children. Also, please bring the yearly college back in session. Angelica Leek, one five zero eight Fire Tale Road. She shouldn't be allowed to be on a school board she chooses to go to and participate in dangerous activities like rioting. Robin Jones, Deep River Road. Please allow high school kids who barely attend in-person classes in some capacity. We are approaching the one-year mark for these kids to be behind computer screens. Virtual learning is not for every student and some of these kids are falling behind, even if the grades don't reflect that. Our elementary and middle schools have allowed Plan, our elementary and middle schools have allowed Plan B and it's time to bring the high schoolers back as well. Sheri Becker, Ballbrock, three zero four four Creep Run. According to the rant in USA Today, Board Member Sheri Womack attended the Capitol protest. I disagree with Ms. Womack concerning presidential election voting results. Republican governors and Republican federal and state judges all ruled no evidence of election tampering. Although I agree with her right to protest peacefully, I do not condone violence trespassing. So my question is, did Ms. Womack enter the Capitol and/or violate the curfew? If yes, she needs to resign or be removed from the Board of Education, as members need to be positive examples of our children by obeying laws and showing disagreement in a peaceful and respectful manner. If no, she should remain. I'll bet I disagree with many of her political positions. As to keep, as to keeping high schools on Plan C, I think it's medically prudent to do so. Hospitals are overwhelmed. Making a doctor choose his patients to save in a continued high-volume manner is morally wrong and thus we need to respect the sacrifices of the medical community and limit cases however we can. Also, newly released studies show lingering medical effects of the majority of COVID survivors. I hope, though, that special needs children may have some option, though, for in-person instruction. I've been impressed with Lee County Schools' responses to the pandemic thus far and wish to thank all involved in their efforts, especially Nurse Mary Holly Oates for her tireless efforts to understand and disseminate critical scientific knowledge. Brenda Clegg, two four eight Beulah Brown Road. I'm requesting immediate dismissal of Sheri Womack for violation of Policy Code twenty-two twenty for her representation of Lee County School Board by not only participating in the events at Capitol Hill on one six twenty twenty-one, but also further giving an interview with national media. We are a well-centered community and should not tolerate hate and bias of many officials of this county and city. Deidra Oakley, three six three nine five South Plank Road. I have three children, one in elementary, one middle, and one high school. I believe all of our kids should be attending school like normal. However, I am sure that isn't going to happen, so I will settle for pointing out that our high school students need some type of in-person instruction. Our internet doesn't support live streaming from a high schooler that basically teaches himself his courses last semester. All he got was limited reading instruction. And here we are doing it all over again this semester. He hasn't even started the curriculum because we're still waiting on work from teachers apparently no longer use paper. The current situation isn't fair to him and I am sure of many other Lee County students. They all need in-person instruction and the current plans are making it extremely difficult for certain students to succeed. While limited in-person doesn't fix our situation, it would help. When making your decision, you should be considering families like ours that do not have an internet option available for live streaming. For instance, you could make it possible for kids like mine to receive in-person instruction every day that's offered. If parents don't want their kids to have in-person instruction, then they should choose the available virtual option and not be the reason my kids aren't getting a quality education. All kids need consideration. All kids in their specific situations should be considered. Please don't leave children behind. Aaron Cotton, one nine three four Brook Cliff Road. All this work is making us fail and teachers are just helping us. I feel like we should less work and more help. Kevin Gutierrez, one three zero zero Bicket Road. Schools need to teach more about injustice and try to voice it more. With Tavia Davis, two eight zero nine Kendale Drive. Sherilyn Womack needs to resign and school systems shouldn't have someone who supports racism in it. Spencer Adams. I am extremely concerned about the possibility of reopening high schools. I'm a teacher at Southern High School and I fear for the safety of all of us. I'd like to discuss the numbers with you. CDC places highest risk rating for returning to school at over ten percent. The CDC also placed the highest risk rating on any county with more than two hundred cases per hundred thousand people. Our rate as of January sixth was fifteen point six percent with eight eight, three point eight cases per hundred thousand people. We are without a doubt in the highest risk category. On January eighth, Lee County had seventy-four new cases. On January ninth, Lee County had sixty-seven new cases. On January tenth, Lee County had seventy-three new cases. As is evident, we are not, not seeing a downward trend with the highest rate since the summer according to the graph in the CDC website. The question right now should be whether or not to reopen high schools. It should be whether, it should, right now, it should not be whether or not to reopen high schools. It should be whether or not to close the elementary and middle schools. Dr. Cohen, the Secretary of North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, said there's an alarming amount of virus everywhere in our state. We are in a very dangerous position. Every single North Carolinian needs to take immediate action to save lives and protect themselves and each other. Ages fifteen to twenty-four account for seventeen percent of the total number of cases in North Carolina. Lee County is currently labeled as a critical community spread by the CDC. As a result, I am astonished at the fact that, that as the positivity rate continues to climb in Lee County, that the Board is willing to put the lives of their children and employees at risk in order to reopen high schools. We are doing a great job online. Attendance is high. Students have figured out how to navigate online learning. With positivity rates going up as well as student success rates, I do not see a reason that we should not stay. Linda Rhodes, six zero two North Dance Street. Members of the Board, we have heard the comments and seen the pictures from the attack on our Capitol. We saw the incendiary social media posts. We heard the President incite his followers by using words like fight, fraud, they stole the election. We knew what was going to happen. On December first, Gable Sterling, a Georgia elections official condemned President Trump for not speaking against the violent threats and harassment. Mr. Sterling predicted that someone would be killed. He was right. The fact that a member of this, of this school board felt it appropriate to attend this riot is an affront to every citizen and child in Lee County. Ms. Womack likes to remind us of her military background. I ask that you review the January eighth comments from former Chairman and Joint Chiefs of Staff Colin Powell regarding President Trump. Quote, "I do not know how he is able to attract these people. They should know better. They are so taken by his political standing that they would not stand up and tell the truth." Ms. Womack would not recognize the truth if it was lying, if it was flying alongside the Confederate flag that was carried through the Capitol. Her motives have no place in the truth. She aligns herself with a dangerous group that incites violence, killed a Capitol Police officer, terrorized members. Alexis Huxtable, four three one Mcire Street. Sherilyn Womack participated in the assault on Capitol Hill. She needs to be designated from the Board of Education immediately. She is no help to any of us and supports terrible morals. Lauren Galano, nine oh five Chatham Street. Ms. Womack should not be in charge of our school district. She has been known to be a Trump supporter, took part in raiding the Capitol. She is homophobic, transphobic, Islamophobic, and a racist. Don't believe me, check her Twitter. She should not take part in deciding what to do with our children's school district because a white woman with conservative beliefs should not be able to decide for our minority children, especially children of immigrants, children of black and brown folks as well. Sanford is populated by more POC than is meaning a white person with far greater conservative beliefs. Jamie and Katie Brown, Robbins. We're both teachers at LCHS and have written several comments since the pandemic. First of all, we appreciate everything you all do for the staff and students at the LCS and understand these decisions are difficult. We're off to good start in remote learning with our classes this semester. Attendance and engagement have been high, have been high thus far. We're concerned about Plan B at this time for a number of reasons, for starters, Lee County has read under the COVID guidelines, which is, which is the recommendation where it's a hundred percent remote. Furthermore, given the current class size of many of the classes at LCHS, we are concerned about how we can accommodate those students in classes that only, could only house twelve students safely under COVID protocol, but there are thirty-plus students on the roster, which would be fifteen students following the A B rotation. Also, are we close to vaccines for many of the at-risk family members and for educators? We ask that you consider continuing Plan C at the high school level until the metrics improve and teachers are able to get vaccinated. We want our kids back just as much as they want to be back, but as it currently stands, the risk for spread is higher than it has ever been. Please consider continuing to Plan C for safety for all. Thank you for your consideration. Joshua Madrono, eighteen twelve Woodland. I think it'd be better for a certain group to go Monday and Tuesday and then we get Wednesday off, then another group goes Thursday, Friday and be so much better. The reason I feel like we should take Wednesday off because everyone except high school, have it off and we'd be more stressed and other children. I hope this helps you make a decision. Sasha Paz, eighteen twelve Woodland Avenue. Ms. Womack should give her resignation. Black lives matter. Mary Ashley Laster, ten eighteen Clearwater Drive. I do not feel comfortable with Sherilyn Womack having any say over my education. As a junior at Lee County High School, we need to have responsible, moral people in power. Karina Salsito, six six two three Old Jefferson Davis Highway. Ms. Womack's action and participating in the riot on the Capitol is not the example that should be set for the future generations of Lee County. Lee County is a diverse county from all cultures and for Ms. Womack to be a part of a hate group against those of color goes completely against the beliefs of those in this county. Please resign, Womack. Joanna Matthews, four three zero Shaw Road. I feel like Lee County Schools should go virtual for a few weeks. COVID cases are on a rampage and it's not safe for students or staff. Did you survive? I don't agree with Sherilyn Womack and believe she shouldn't be part of the Board of Education representing her. Bethany Moto, Sanford. Hello, just wanted to say that Sherilyn Womack participated in the attack on the Capitol Building and shouldn't be in a position of power as a domestic terrorist. She's not setting a very good example for people she is supposed to be helping. Also, online school is not foggers. Anyways, stand quackety for clear skin. Sarah Hall. Sherilyn Womack attended protest in Washington DC to protest against election results. We need to know if she took part in the invasion of the Capitol illegally entering the buildings because if she, if she did, she needs to be removed from her seat. What kind of example would she be setting for our children with unacceptable behavior? Alessandra Piedra, three oh eight Providence Hall. I'm here to comment that I demand resignation of Sherilyn Womack due to her participation with the assault on Capitol Hill. Amanda Smith, Carbondine Drive. As a parent and citizen of the Sanford community, I think it's extremely irresponsible to send high school students back into the buildings. There have been thirty-plus teachers since Christmas who have tested positive. On top of that, the many, many students who have also tested positive and in quarantine. North Carolina's positivity rate is well above fifteen percent and we are seeing more than ten thousand cases per day. It is deemed unsafe to go into school buildings by CDC if we are over five percent. Our numbers are way too high. By laying teachers and students back into the building, we're laying the spread continued throughout the community. While I understand my child can remain virtual, I am concerned about the well-being of the community, which is currently in a critical red zone, as opposed to a few months ago being in yellow. Why is it safer now when teachers are out? Who would take over their classes? There's already a sub shortage, shortage? Is there a plan in place that will keep students supervised without shoving them all into a room together? What about teachers who are high-risk or those that have high-risk family members? While elementary students are sticking with one teacher, what about high school students who see four different teachers a day while moving to four-plus different classes a day? I'm sure not all rooms are being cleaned in between every class of every day. It's safer for our students if you keep at least the high schoolers home and please consider making middle and elementary virtual as, or as is now. Shannon Williams, three five five Graham Road. I'm a fifth grade teacher with Lee County Schools. As I sit here and write my public comment, my seventeen-year-old's son's father is in the hospital at First Health More Regional Hospital fighting COVID and pneumonia as we speak. He's only thirty-nine years old, has no underlying health condition, conditions, and is a Lee County resident. Our county is in a critical community spread seen at nineteen, seventeen point nine percent positivity rate. With each passing day, the Lee County dashboard has increased significantly for students and staff with positive cases as we are not following metric guidelines anymore. I'm in constant fear and worry that I'm going to bring COVID home to my husband who's diabetic and has heart disease or to my seventeen-year-old son. Please explain why we're supposed to stay away from our own parents, relatives, and friends and not have Thanksgiving or Christmas get-togethers with our own families? But yet, we can sit in a poorly ventilated classroom for five, six hours a day with twelve other people's children and that's just fine. These are children who are traveling out of state, the country, and going who knows where else and then coming and sitting in our classrooms. The disregard for the overall safety and well-being of educators and staff in Lee County Schools is disheartening. The failure to see us people with, the failure to see us as people with loved ones and lives outside the classroom has been distressing for all educators and staff and eye-opening for parents who support us. I feel that returning to Plan C is the only safe and appropriate thing to do now until the metrics are safe for staff and for students to return to in-person learning, like they were in October at or below five percent. On behalf of the educators and staff in Lee County Schools, please consider not only the students, but the entire staff. Christian Kenny, five oh nine Snow Circle. Sherilyn Womack should offer little resignation due to her participation in the violence on Capitol Hill. It is utterly disgraceful that a member of our school board took part in such nonsense. If she is going to be able to make decisions for black and brown students, they should be made by someone who has the best interest, not someone who sets an example such as this is very distasteful. Mitzi Douglas, Broadway. Hello there. At this time, I feel like the COVID numbers being extremely high, we should take extra precaution with decision as made tonight. I would like, I would like for this to be a decision as in the best interest of students and staff of Lee County. I pray for all of our health and safety during these unprecedented times. Please continue to remember who your decision affects. This should not be a political decision. It should be about the health and well-being of everyone. Thank you for your time. Nancy Blevins, one three one Pondview Lane. Hello, I would just like to say thank you for the continued ability to have public comments. In the high school setting, as a teacher, I, I am still In the high school setting, as a teacher, I, I am still hesitant to have students coming into the building. I believe their education would be better in the building. However, with the number of cases rising again, I would prefer to continue virtual learning through the end of the year. If the pandemic continues to next school year, the summer could be used as planning time to adjust and look at returning face to face. Allowing more time for schools to prepare for students may help the transition back to the building, back to the building be as smooth as possible. Mystic Crabtree, three five one two Glade Run Drive. My husband and I are supplementing our children's learning as much as possible when they are virtual. Not every child has this luxury. Our children are collectively falling behind and need to be back in the classroom. It is vitally important that the school board continue to allow in-person learning at least part-time, and if feasible, find a way to send them back in person full-time. I respect the decision of those who prefer to keep their children home so a virtual option is needed as well. Brenda Johnson, Bonda Reeves, eight one five West McIntosh Drive, excuse me, West McIntosh Street and two one one seven Jasney Drive. According to Policy Code twenty two twenty, official school spokesperson of the Lee County Board of Education, any person speaking in official capacity shall conduct his or her assignment at the standpoint of the best interest of the board, the school district of the community, and as representative of his or own personal ideas or feelings. As concerned members of the community, Sherilyn Womack does not represent the best interest of our school district and community because she represents herself as a member of the Lee County Board of Education in North Carolina. From a USA Today article titled DC Updates, Four Dead, Fifty Two Arrested, Fourteen Police Officers Injured After Pro-Trump Liars Breached U.S. Capitol. FBI Opens Investigation. We believe she violated the terms of this policy code. We recognize horrific events that took place on January sixth at the U.S. Capitol. Many members in support of this effort were well aware of the potential violence that led to many injured and dead. Regardless as a result of the events, Sherilyn Womack pursued to speak to the media and identify herself as a member of our Board of Education rather than individual representative of her own personal ideas or feelings. She presented questions that were already discounted by many sources regarding suspicious ballot counting and her personal actions to represent herself as a Board of Education member in Lee County in the aftermath of this violent riot is disrespectful. This violence needs to stop and the children of Lee County need federal representation. Our consolidated concerns include the following questions. Are our actions a reflection of the Lee County Board of Education? How does this impact her decision-making? Do our actions affect her ability to perform her job appropriately? Barbara King, six two Gunter Lake Road. Our COVID numbers are higher than ever. I work in healthcare. The schools need to be a hundred percent virtual until the vaccine is available for a hundred percent of the population. Mikiya Birch, Goldsboro Avenue. Sherilyn Womack shouldn't be allowed to get away with the terrorist acts on the Capitol and still keep her job. The fact that she took the time out of her day to be part of such acts is unacceptable. Jacqueline Roberts, three two zero one Windmere Drive. As a teacher, I am very concerned about the schools remaining open. Every day, more and more students and staff are being required to quarantine due to the COVID infection or exposure. With the number of cases in schools increasing and as the state wrestles with daily surges and coronavirus infections, urge you to call for a return to Plan C. I love teaching, as every educator does, but this year has been extremely stressful. The constant worry over the risk I'm being asked to take is taking its toll on my health. Me and my coworkers are stressed and feeling overwhelmed as well. What bothers us the most is that it doesn't seem to matter what the data looks like or how high the positive percent rate gets. Our schools remain open. We are all in agreement, there is no substitute for in-person learning, but we're in the middle of a pandemic, and the health and safety of teachers, staff, and students and their families needs to be considered. Our lives matter. Sincerely, Jacqueline Roberts. Esmeralda Santiago, five three one Midland Avenue. I wanted to comment about Sherilyn. I do not think she should be able to work in the school district. What she did was uncalled for and shouldn't be allowed to have a job. As she stormed the Capitol, she holds racism and hatred in her heart and which shouldn't be allowed if you truly care about your colored students, you let this go without any punishment. Caitlin Upchirks, eight eight three Blackstone Road. Please read this comment in its entirety. You are all, you all are aware that your board member Sherilyn Womack committed a federal crime by crossing state lines to incite or participate in a riot, right? You're aware that she traveled to DC participating in the events that occurred at the Capitol, right? I'll be writing a letter to whomever I need, whomever I need to in order for a position to be revoked. Also, do you guys truly even care about us or education? Thank you for your time. Alisa Alicia Nicole Martin, four three six one Carroll Road. I'm an eleventh grade student at Lee County High School. I'm extremely disgusted by the actions of Sherilyn Womack. Our participation in the assault on Capitol Hill is very sad note. She is a representative of our county's Board of Education. When you are held in a position of public trust, you are responsible to represent all communities, including blacks. Her participation in this riot was a clear representation of a leader who stings for hatred, depression against minorities, and a symbol of racism, meaning she shares the same ideology and values as the riots symbolize. I demand her immediate resignation with Lee County Board of Education because the actions she has taken makes me feel unsafe. Rachel Davis, one seven zero eight Nash Street. I want to voice, I want to voice understanding concern regarding getting high school students back into the classroom. I understand there is a population that's not having their needs met to the best possibilities as and as a teacher. I am working hard to make up for that by meeting that all days and times for students who need my, any assistance. My only request is twofold. Please don't take the one study done about school and COVID spread as the gospel because other experts are saying that the data is skewed. And the second part, at least wait until teachers have the opportunity to get vaccinated before bringing the students back into our spaces. This is the first winter season that I have not been ill at all. I would like to keep it that way with this dangerous virus. You and the decisions you have to make on behalf are very much appreciated. Thank you for your efforts and for listening. Kendall Gaines, Sanford. People should have the choice if they want to go back or not. Just send us back on, us back online school is so hard. Sometimes I don't come out of it, I don't come out of my room until like seven PM. There's a lot of stress and we're not getting that social part that we definitely need right now. I don't really have a problem speaking, but some people are terrified to talk. I know I was at first, but it's not for fair to people who are trying to get the most out of the online school even when there's barely anything to get. I hope you make a decision. Thank you. Neil Rosser, twenty one oh four Wolf Trap Place. I'm writing this comment on the morning of January twelfth. At this time, the positivity rate in Lee County is eighteen point one percent. Back in August, when the board decided to go with Plan C, our positivity rate was high, but not as high as it is right now. I've listened to almost all the school board meetings since that time, and many comments have asked for the board to create a numerical threshold to make decisions regarding COVID-19 and which plan Lee County schools will move forward with. At this time, I will ask the Lee County Board, School Board again to make a concrete benchmark for our positive positivity rate to make decisions on which plan schools should be in. There needs to be a below a certain percentage of Plan A, below a certain percentage of Plan B for Plan B, and above a certain percentage for Plan C. I think the board has failed our community by not making these benchmarks, and if they have made these benchmarks, not making them known to the community. You should make these benchmarks and use them to guide the decisions moving forward so there's no question as to what plan our schools will use in the future. Elaine Everett, four two five Green Lane Drive. I'm currently a teacher at SLHS, and I am concerned about the high school students returning to the classroom. I totally agree that in person would be beneficial to the students on Plan B, but my concerns are that if a student becomes COVID positive and they can potentially contaminate not only the students and teacher in one classroom, but in all four of their classrooms, even though we have a great plan to keep students six feet apart, I really feel this is going to be extremely impossible. I also have a concern about the possibility of spreading contamination to my spouse who has stage four cancer. We do everything we can to keep him isolated and safe from this virus. I would never forgive myself if brought this home, brought home this virus to him. Marsha Hudson, eighteen oh one Carbonden Road. Lee County Board Members, excuse me, Lee County School Board Members. Lee County positivity rate twenty point three percent. Currently, Lee County is experiencing a severe outbreak and is the top sixteen county statewide for the highest positivity rate. North Carolina is experiencing an upswing in COVID hospitalizations, and our medical facilities are reaching capacity while facing an ever-increasing COVID patient admittance. How do you think that mixing the community and schools will reduce the number of people that will become infected? Many parents of high school students are unaware of the realities of a hybrid classroom. I believe that many will pull their students once they come home and tell them about the realities that they had to endure at school, much like what has happened at the middle schools last semester. I feel that LCS has not prepared high school parents or students adequately for the reality of Plan B. This age group is not just at risk and is able, this age group is just as at risk and is able to transmit disease as rarely as any adult. I'm writing to tell you how I see realities of day-to-day instruction under Plan B. Long bus rides to pick up a few students who are living at a distance from each other. Currently, high school staff members are driving the buses for lower schools. Full drive once these staff members are redirected to drive to the high schools. If a student has a fever, Southern Lee High School is a, is designed to move students through a long, tight hallway that will pose problems for social distancing. When it rains or it's very cold, how will we accommodate student movement in the building? Students will not be able to congregate and visit with their friends. Parents want to return to normalcy for their children, but that will not be happening at the high school. Nothing will be normal until we honor the directives necessary in a pandemic. Students will sit in classrooms with the teacher that's behind the barrier, teacher provided, of course. Many of the teachers will have both a face mask and a face shield, which will impede instruction. We have spent the past semester using facial expressions to teach via Google Classroom that will win for students in the classroom and at home. Instruction for both in-person and virtual classrooms will continue to be via the computer since teachers will have to attend for both sets of students at the same time. Therefore, all students in the classroom will have, will still be receiving the same mode of instruction as they did at home. No teacher will approach a student desk for individual instruction or help due to the six feet, six foot social distancing directive. Teachers are preparing lesson plans for digital learning, holding office hours for student tutoring, calling parents, and taking care of attendments. How will we handle the extra duties that will be needed to clean, monitor student movement, and feed them? Many teachers or parents are navigating the school schedules for their children. How are we being heard? Your decision tonight will impact teachers as well as students and their families. The first semester is at an end, and we have adjusted to this type of learning. If you choose Plan B, it cannot be implemented for several weeks. By that time, our COVID numbers will certainly have increased. How can we justify this risk and change for only a very few days of meeting face to face with limited students? What will occur when the new, new highly transmittable strains show up in North Carolina and Lee County? I am a teacher by choice and it's my passion. For the past twenty years, I have looked forward each day to working with teenagers. Returning to school will occur once our community is taking necessary precautions to decrease the incidence of contracting COVID, but not until then. Please take our considerations into your decisions. Delay the implementation of Plan B for the high schools until you are sure that all students, staff, and parents will be safe from this life-altering disease. This has been the only way we've had an opportunity to be heard. Thank you for your time and consideration. Marsha Hudson. Ron Coley, nine oh two Windraces Trail. As the theater teacher at LCHS, I can say with no uncertainty that I miss my kids terribly. I can hardly wait for the day that we can put on productions before a live audience again. I also hope that very soon I can have very small groups coming after school and safely do a video film production. I've actually been amazed by how productive virtual school has been, but still can't hold a candle to live instruction. However, I don't want to see us go to Plan B at all. We can accomplish great things by working with students live, and we can accomplish great things, though not as great working with students virtually. If I have a few students sitting in classrooms, but I'm still trying to work with the ones at home, I will not be able to give either group my full attention. The ones in the classroom will not be able to do anything extra until I can walk away from the computer and work with them for live instruction. If I get them up and active like before the pandemic, I won't be focusing on the ones at home, so the only real option is to have the ones at school simply sent to the classroom and do exactly what they would have done at home. We know that Plan A works, and we have found ways to make Plan C work. Plan B is a whole different situation. We are certainly not ready to move Plan A at this time. I recommend that high schools remain on Plan C until circumstances allow us to move to Plan A. The students will be best served by having a hundred percent of their teacher's attention through whichever means of instruction is used. Angela Matthews, four one five Oak Branch Lane. Dear School Board Members, I am the music teacher at Southern Lee High School. I teach band, orchestra, and chorus. COVID-19 has had devastating effect on the music programs at secondary level. I anticipate that it will take several years to recover the number of students involved in music courses and the level of musicianship we had before COVID. At this point, as all of this has been for all of us, I've seen an enormous amount of courage, tenacity, and compassion demonstrated by the music students and teachers in the county during this difficult time. I want you to know that we are aware of the tough decision facing you all as you decide what format our instruction will take in the near future. While we are not teaching the preferred format for music education, we are teaching, we are learning, we're making progress, and we are staying strong. I personally urge you to heed the recommendations of health professionals and organizations such as the CDC and the NCDHHS. Urge you to keep a close eye on the infection rates locally. Our obligation is first and foremost to the health and safety of our students and staff. Please remember this as you decide how to proceed. Thank you for your time and consideration. Jonathan McNeil, one nine six Saddle, Brooklyn Drive. Anybody that holds a public office that took part in the Capitol Hill riots on January sixth needs to be immediately removed from office, no questions asked. Christian McLean, five oh eight East Forest Oaks Drive. To be morally off campus and express your personal beliefs is one thing, but to add your official title as a member of the school board is horrendous. Sherilyn Womack needs to go now since she knows that she represents the board, her actions should reflect that. She was more upset about losing, about losing a fair election. This has been the same election process that was used to elect her to office. Now is the time for her to go. Kate Cochran, Lord Ashley Drive. Sherilyn Womack's attendance at the riots in DC is despicable. Representing herself to the press as Lee County Board of Education member while discussing reviews are not representation of our county should be reason enough to be dismissed from her position on the board, or she's free to protest as a private citizen, but not pre-represent in official capacity. Sherilyn isn't new to being antagonist or demonstrated by being party to previously, previous investigative protests and support tolerant racist in Lee County as well, more so aside from the violence. She is guilty of either by association or participation on January sixth. She displays blatant disregard for the public and community health by attending a large crowded event without masking and ignoring social distancing. She and her accomplices are endangering the healthcare system that is already strained. Her reckless activities are those too dangerous and not representative of our community. Her disregard for the health of those around her and her supporting fascism and illegal activity make her incompetent to make safe and educated decisions for the children of our community. The members of the board should be those who reflect the values of the community they are to represent. She brings great shame to our county. Stacy Noonie, Sanford. Dear members of the board, yet again, you have a decision to make, and again, this decision is not any easier than the ones before, but I'm still going to ask that you listen. Based on the decision of the last board meeting, one can only assume that the teacher is still not being heard. Somehow, the belief is that if a student is not seen within the confines of the classroom, he or she is not receiving an appropriate education. Why? The assumption has become that we are failing at our jobs because the desks in our darkened, desks in our darkened and quiet classrooms are empty. Again, I ask why? Many teachers within this county are working harder, reflecting more on how to serve the children under our tutelage than before. We are consistently and intentionally discussing ways to improve the platform in which we are having to work, but all that seems to be overlooked because students are not walking the halls. We are professionals. Please treat us as such and recognize the hard work that we are doing to support and educate our students. With numbers on the rise at a rather alarming rate, the fact remains that if you were as a board, the fact remains that if you as a board decide to send students back into school buildings, you are unnecessarily will, unwillingly sending us into a dangerous situation. How is this in the business of anyone in the community? As of yesterday, our county was at a sixteen point three percent infection rate listed as a severe outbreak area. Ironically, several months ago, when we were at about half of that, we were told it is too dangerous to return. How is it safer now with higher rates? Local businesses are doing everything they can to keep their employees safe, allowing them to work from home when possible to reduce the exposure and possible spread of the virus, of this virus. Why are we even considering the opposite? Counties across our state who opened their school doors are now closing them again because of the increasing numbers. You say families first, but I am left wondering how teachers and their families are being taken into account. The decisions that make this evening The decisions that we make this evening should not be politically driven. Politics has no place in this. The decisions you make should be those that consider all members of the community, but which teachers are an integral part. What happens when teachers have to quarantine or actually contract the virus? What then? People are so worried about the education of students, but what happens when the teacher cannot be there at all? It will be in that moment that you begin to truly see the education of the children in this county suffer. Additionally, when this happens, and it will because it already is happening across, across our state and others, the county cannot support the large absences of teachers. We do not have substitutes. The reality of the situations, we have inadequate personnel. Are each of you going to volunteer your time to help in this endeavor and risk yourselves and your families? You say you support teachers, then please do so. Thank you for your time and consideration. Christopher Ristler, Sanford. Hello, I'm a teacher for Lee County Schools, and I wanted to put in my opinion for the board. I understand many concerns about continuing Plan C. Was the learning better for students before they went virtual? Of course. This may be for a number of factors, including internet issues or having to take care of younger siblings while they should be focusing on learning. But there is no doubt that before COVID-19, if the students were succeeding far more. But we, as teachers, are trying to overcome these issues and provide the best education that we can while staying safe. There is no guarantee that if we go to Plan B, the students will learn better. There are so many other factors to consider here besides just being in the building. Students will not be able to interact as much as they used to with their teachers, and we will not be able to provide the same level of activities that we were before. Now, I understand many parents want to get their children out of the house, but that would be the only advantage, considering they would be still mainly learning virtually just from the classroom. This is not even to touch on the safety concerns, not only for us educators, but for the other students and staff as well. It will be near impossible to keep students six feet apart, and if you disagree, you have never been in a public high school. If one student gets infected, that can spread exponentially to so many other students and teachers that soon the whole school will be infected. This isn't even accounting for all the family members at home from both staff and students that could be infected before it is caught. Catherine Hampson, 203 Vernon Street, Vernon Street. I'm deeply concerned that school board member Shirley Womack participated in events that led to the breach of the US Capitol by domestic terrorists on January 6th. I am further concerned that she identified herself by affiliation with our school board during a USAID interview. It seems to be incapable of understanding basically logical reasoning and is apparently susceptible psycho, to psychological manipulation, to basic and sophisticated propaganda conspiracy theories that have been easily verified, waiting repeatedly debunked in the public arena. What other ridiculous lies might Miss Womack believe while charged with the responsibility of our children's education, while she be ordering snake, will she be ordering snake oil for distribution in our halls next? Mitzi Douglas Broadway. Hello there. At this time, I feel like with the COVID numbers being extremely high, we should take extra precautions with the decision that's being made tonight. I'd like this to be a decision that is in the best interest of the students and staff of Lee County. I pray for all of our health and safety during these unprecedented times. Please consider remembering who your decision affects. This should not be a political decision. It should be about the health and well-being of everyone. Thank you for your time. Sherry Balcom, 1867 Swan Station Road. Please take into consideration and allow faculty and staff for LCS to have the opportunity to get vaccinated before bringing back all students on campus based on numbers and community spread will be in harm's way. We can open up, but it will be only a matter of time before we have to close due to quarantines, contact tracing, or those that have it. Don't turn a blind, blind eye on what is happening. When we look at state indicators, local indicators, and school indicators, we need to give the staff the opportunity to be as safe as possible. The choice to return any earlier could result in more deaths. Meredith Ward, Brookfield Circle. Before I begin, I'd like to thank the board for giving the members of Lee County a chance to have their voices heard. I grew up in Lee County schools as a student and now as an employee. Lee County has always erred on the side of caution when it came to school or building closures. Last Friday is a perfect example. Schools were closed Friday because there was a chance of wintry weather. Last Friday certainly was not the first time Lee County's closed because of chances. I appreciate that Lee County has always erred on the side of caution because I'd rather be safe than sorry. However, while was the decision made to close the building because of the chance of wintry weather, while tonight the board is considering reopening schools during this very real-world live pandemic. I've heard several community members make comments like, "Schools are safest place for kids right now." Right now, schools are safe because students are not in the building. Or when students come back to the building in any capacity, the building will no longer be safe because of maskless and non-social distance activities students are doing outside of school. School can have as many procedures as possible, but if masks aren't worn and social distancing is not being practiced outside of the building, in-school procedures won't matter, will be less effective at the rate, at the least. Teachers in Lee County should not be forced to work amidst a global pandemic until every single teacher has a legitimate opportunity to be vaccinated. Until then, opening schools would be reckless. If the board has set on reopening high schools, I implore that you wait until all teachers that have both doses of the COVID-19. Amy Hipser, 8025 Royal Drive. I think Sherry Lynn Womack should step down from the school board. Showing up at a riot where six people were killed and being interviewed was unacceptable. This kind of action is disappointing to our children, set the bad example of making decisions for students. Vicki Lynn Wilkins, 957 South Bay Drive. Thank you, board members, for hearing our concerns about students returning to high school. This math problem is not one that requires a complex formula. The numbers in our county are rising plain and simple. Looking at our dashboard as long as one can see the numbers in a specific category, which is now in triple digits. Jessica Madely Rivera is an infectious disease epidemiologist who is serving as the scientific communications lead of the COVID Tracking Project. There are two things she was watching very closely before sending her children to school, and she's asked this question often by numerous parents. Instead of telling parents what to do, she offers suggestions from families' experience and information, as well as links to aid parents in their decision-making. Case growth in the area where her family resides and test positivity rates are her primary focus. The trend of surges throughout our nation is catastrophic. These trends should be going in a downward direction, and test positivity rates should drop below 5%. Being below 5% ensures the community that mitigation is working and COVID is being suppressed. As an educator, my first responsibility is the safety of my students. I would do anything to protect them at school or away from it, and if that means giving my life to save them, I would not think twice in that moment. With a virus that is the horse of a different color continuing to increase positivity rates in our community daily, I cannot assure parents of their child's safety in school. Who in the school has been exposed to the virus and who could be asymptomatic? Jessica Rivera did not send her children to school. The 5% rate and below ensures us that mitigation is working. Bill Carver, 104 Steel Bridge Road. I am Bill Carver, Lee County Commissioner and liaison to the Board of Education. I'm looking forward to attending meetings in person once the impact of COVID abates. Chairman Kirk Smith is looking forward to a joint meeting of the BOE and the BOC. Dr. Crumpton suggested a joint meeting on February 15th at the Civic Center where there is sufficient space to observe COVID restrictions and is early enough to consider input for the budget process. That time and location is currently scheduled for the BOC. Thanks for the daily effort you make to advance the education of our children. Amy Ross, 2104 Woodtrap Place. I'd like to add that other counties have made their decisions objective and based on the data and numbers. This decision tonight should be objective and not subjective. This is not politics, and it should not be based on your opinion, but only based on the facts and numbers. Cumberland County at 17.1% positivity is on Plan C until March 15th. I sincerely hope their board puts the data above all else tonight and puts their staff and students' safety above all else as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. That was extensive, to say the least.
Madam Chair, before we proceed with the chair's commission, I'd like to make a motion, please.
Yes, sir. You have the floor.
I'd like to move that the public comments as presented this evening be made a part of the official minutes of this meeting. That's only vice of the school board attorney.
There's a motion to append the public comments to the agenda of the meeting. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote. We have a unique situation as two of our members are attending electronically. At this time, I will take a vote by, I think by roll call would be the easiest way to do this. Ms. Sutton?
No.
No. Ms. Womack? Mr. Kelly? Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Smith, I apologize. Ms. Hilliard?
Yes.
And I'll vote aye. That is a five-two vote the motion carries. At this time, I have the Lee County Schools' Vision and Policy Statement, 2120, the Code of Ethics for School Board and Members. Ms. Hilliard, if you will.
The board recognizes that collectively and individually, all members of the board must adhere to an accepted code of ethics in order to improve public education. Members of Lee County Board of Education should avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflict of interest as we handle the work of the board, avoid the solicitation and/or acceptance of gifts in return for advice or assistance on matters concerning the operation of the business of the board, avoid the misuse of public funds, avoid misrepresentation or falsification of facts, and avoid making confidential information public. The board accepts the code of ethics established by the North Carolina School Boards Association.
Thank you. At this time, we have the agenda before you. The agenda, pardon. I'm sorry, I jumped the gun. Yes, Mr. McCracken, the vision, please.
Yes, a vision statement. Lee County Schools, in partnership with the community, will provide challenging learning experiences for students in a safe and supportive environment. We are committed to academic excellence, technological innovations, social responsibility, and lifelong learning. Our success will be demonstrated by the achievement of our students and their positive participation in society.
Thank you. I apologize. All right. At this time, we have the agenda before us. There were two items that I would like to amend this agenda to include. One is just before our closed session to have board member comments. I had emailed the board about that, that each member would have three minutes of comments about the activities that they pursue related to the school board this week. Is there any objection to that item? And then, upon request, I have an item to be added to New Business. This is coming from the HR department. Apparently, there was a, an extension to some leave that our teachers can make, and they need our board to consider approving that for HR can grant emergency leave. You have that item before you, I believe.
Madam Chair, if I may have the floor for just a second.
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion as well and put it under New Business as well before the closed session, and my motion would be to authorize Attorney Love and any other outside counsel. He may seek to investigate the actions of Board Member Womack on Capitol Hill last week in regard to violations of school board policies. Once the investigation is complete, Attorney Love would report back to the board with those findings.
Okay. So we have a, let's handle the amendments one at a time. Can we do that? And we'll go individually through them. The amendment to add board member comments at the end. Is there a motion to place those?
So move to add a board member comments at the end of our.
Can we have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
Can we have a motion, a second? Is there any discussion on board member, any discussion on the future discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to the vote. All in favor of adding board member comments as an, a non-action item prior to closed session, signify by saying aye. And Ms. Womack, are you at distance? I didn't hear you, but I will. Any objections to adding board member comments at the end? Signify by saying aye. Thank you. We have a second amendment, then, to add an action item under New Business as item number four. This is the Family First Corona Response Act Emergency Leave Provision.
Motion to add item four in the New Business for the chair's.
We do have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of adding the leave discussion to New Business, item number four, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, we have an additional motion on the table for Mr. McCracken. Mr. McCracken, will you restate that motion one more time for us?
Yes, Madam Chair. My motion is to authorize Attorney Love and any other outside counsel. He may seek to investigate the actions of Board Member Womack on Capitol Hill last week in regard to violations of school board policy and report back to the board with his findings.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? We have a second. That was Mr. Smith, a Dr. Smith. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote. I will work from, I guess, my right across the table. The motion is to authorize the board attorney and any other attorneys to investigate the actions on Capitol Hill of one of our board members. In favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Dr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hilliard?
Aye.
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 Ms. Sutton?
No.
And Ms. Womack?
Absolutely not.
Okay. The motion does carry for the board to authorize the attorney to look at this, and it will come back before us. Now that it has gone to the attorney, it will likely come up at closed session because of the attorney privilege at that point. All right. Now, with the amendments, we need to.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented with all the amendments.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion on the amended agenda? Hearing none, who look through, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda stands approved. We have an item of minutes approval. We have the minutes of the regular board meeting dated December 8th, 2020, and then a student transfer appeal hearing of December 16th, 2020.
I have a motion to approve the minutes for the regular board meeting, student transfer and student transfer appeal.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And that will finally bring us to our announcements. We do have Mr. Dale Smith here, Representative of Smith &amp; Wyke, the audit report for 2019-2020. May I ask the board secretary if she has another copy of that? Apparently, I did. I have hidden mine from myself.
All right. Good evening, board members. Good to see y'all. Has everyone got a copy of the audit report?
I did.
Okay.
I'm either sat down or.
I think Ms. Jones said she had a few extra if somebody needs more. Is that good?
Yes, sir.
All right. What I'd like to do this evening is start by giving you a brief summary of the results of our audit and go over the, the letters that we issue that are included in the audit report, and then what we'll do is go through a few pages out of the report that I feel like are of most importance to you guys in managing, helping to manage the finances of the school district. The audit is basically, covers two main areas. We perform an audit of the actual finances of the school system, which includes the amounts that you see in the report, and then we also perform an audit of the compliance for the district with various state and federal laws and regulations pertaining to the state and federal funding that flows through the district. And within the report that we issued, there are a total of four opinion letters that we issue that relate to these two audit sections. And we're happy to report that all four of these opinion letters are clean, unmodified reports, which means that we feel that the financial. uh, which means that we feel that the financial information that's included in the report is reliable and free from any sort of material misstatement. And there were no findings, no question cost, uh, no inappropriate expenditures, and no significant internal control issues that were noted, uh, and included in the report. In addition, this is the second year in a row of reporting no material weaknesses in our audit, uh, which will allow the district to once again be classified as what's called a low-risk auditee. Uh, being a low-risk auditee, uh, can reduce the number of grants for which the district is required to have a federal, uh, Uniform Guidance Compliance Audit completed each year. And then it, uh, probably also reduces, uh, the district's overall risk.
Can I get you to pick that microphone up just a little bit more? I think you're a little taller than how I see you.
Is that it? Let's see. How about that? There we go.
I think that's better.
Okay. Um, and then it, uh, also probably reduces the district's overall risk of having the federal government perform like a surprise desk audit, uh, something of that nature. So being a low-risk auditee is a definite, uh, uh, plus for the district. Um, and again, these four letters are all clean, unmodified reports, and then, again, we're happy to report that. Now, there was a, uh, a separate letter that we issued, specific things. And one of the, uh, things that we're supposed to, uh, verify is that, uh, there's parental approval for each student, uh, that we select. And in our, in our initial sample of 25 files, there was one student that did not have, uh, parental approval for placement in the program. And we selected another sample of, I think it was 28 students. No issues noted in that sample. I think the one exception that we did note was, uh, uh, just an isolated instance. Uh, so therefore, it wasn't considered a finding, and it's just been reported in this separate letter. So, again, I don't think you really had any issues in that area, that appeared to be just a, an isolated instance. Okay, if you would, let's turn, um, to page 12 in the audit report. And page 12 is the balance sheet of the district's governmental funds. And we'll be focusing, uh, right now on the first column, which is your general fund. And you can see at the very top, the district had cash and cash equivalents at June 30th of $3,903,434. And total assets were $4,945,897. And there in the middle of the page, total liabilities were $2,44163 at June 30th. And if you take your assets minus liabilities, you get the district's, uh, ending fund balance at June 30th, which is the next-to-last number in that first column of $2,901,734. And this ending fund balance represents an increase of $2.2 million over the fund balance that was reported, uh, at June 30th, 2019. And this improvement in fund balances, uh, is good to see. And, um, the district's fund balance had gotten critically low, uh, just a couple of years ago, down to around $372,000. And, uh, and I think the Board has done a great job of building those fund balance reserves back up, uh, and getting the, uh, the fund balance, uh, up to what we would consider a more adequate level. And with the early spring closure, uh, school closure for COVID-19, uh, the district was able to add a lot of, uh, fund balance this year, again, $2.2 million. But that is very consistent with what we've seen across the state. Almost every district we've been to this year has seen a, uh, a significant, uh, uh, increase in their local fund balance. Uh, less travel, less utility costs, and I know y'all know all of this. But, uh, again, every, every district we've been to has seen that, and y'all were able to shift expenses over to state because state funding basically stayed the same, uh, even though y'all had a reduction in, in, in the cost that the district was incurring, uh, which, which did allow for you guys to, to add to fund balance this year. Uh, we've just been trying to caution Boards that this is more than likely just a, a one-time, uh, cost savings and that, uh, the economic fallout from COVID-19 probably hasn't been seen yet. So, uh, it's probably a, a good thing to try to build those reserves up as much as you can and not get into the habit of, uh, of having to use that fund balance to balance budgets going forward. Um, did anyone have any questions about the general fund fund balance before we move on?
I was just going to ask your opinion, um, granted, I have a two-years, uh, I'm sorry, there's also a question on the line, I'll get to that just on.
Okay.
When I was on the floor two years ago, the fund balance was significantly low. Would you say that the fund balance we're carrying right now is sufficient? Minimally sufficient or not sufficient?
Well, and, and I, we issued a separate letter as part of the audit last year, and we, we talked about that fund balance was what we still considered to be too low. Um, now, the state does not mandate a minimum fund balance level for LEAs, but they do mandate that, uh, other municipalities, counties, cities, towns, that they do not allow their fund balance to fall below 8% of their general fund operating budget. And y'all right now are at about 10.7% of your general fund expenditures, so.
That's good news.
Yeah, y'all are above the, the 8%, but not.
We'd like to stay there.
That, that, that's right. I, again, I would say if y'all, if y'all keep it where you're at, you, you would be adequate, definitely not excessive. Um, and if you even build it up a little bit more, uh, you know, we wouldn't mind seeing that either, so.
Good, thank you, sir. Uh, there is a question, Ms. Womack, you, you typed a question, you can unmute yourself and speak it if you want.
My question was for the superintendent, have we performed 100% check of files before we have parental consent from all of our EC students, and that's for Dr. Bryant? My other question was explaining the variance of $118,000 from 2019 to 2020. It appears we went from a surplus, which was $203,000, to a deficit of $118,000. And my last question was, does the $1.7 million variance between 2019 and 2020?
Can you, can you direct us to a point in the budget or in the agenda, I mean, the, uh, audit?
I am currently looking at, uh, one of the pages, page eight, and part of it's under the general fund budgetary highlights.
Okay, hang on. Page eight?
Very first question has to do with the exceptional child files, which is actually under that direction as well as the first page. It talks about how we were unable to, uh, that it had parental consent form for service. I'm under the understanding that that's very significant, not to have parental consent for any EC services. And, uh, number question, the second and third questions that I put in the comments section, so that could do with, um, page eight. And it falls under the school, uh, food service fund, reported increase in the net position. And then it also goes down to talk about an increase of $2,000, I mean, $203,000. And below that is my third question in the comments as well, about general funding with budgetary highlights. And my question was, does the $1.7 million variance, does that go with 19 related?
Yeah. I'm the only one that can see the questions, okay? The first question was to Dr. Bryant, as a result of this, um, finding, was there a 100% check of EC files for parental consent forms signed?
Uh, our EC department, uh, has been checking through those files throughout the fall. And as we've gone into, uh, in, into the new year, um, we, we, uh, uh, we typically do that, and our, or a lot of our lead teachers, uh, go through and check for compliance issues. I think as, uh, Mr. Smith said, this one instance was just.
The anomaly.
And, and in actuality, um, I, I don't remember the exact one, but I think there was one of those signatures was occurring about the same time that everything happened with COVID. And I think there was some, 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 uh, lack of direction there. But, but our, I, I guess to answer the question, our EC department is on top of this.
Is already working on it after getting the statement, and that is one of their task items.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, now, Ms. Womack, I'm looking at, please explain the variance, and your second is from page eight. It says, please explain the variance of $718,000 from 2019 to 2020.
Yeah, I think she's referring to the, uh, the, um, where the writing starts on page eight, proprietary fund.
Yeah, the proprietary fund.
Yeah, and that, that, we, we were actually gonna go and talk more about the school nutrition fund after we left that page 12.
Okay.
So maybe, maybe we'll cover her, her question when we, when we do that.
So we think we'll come back to that when we talk about child nutrition, they had a rough year.
Yes.
Okay, and then her third question, she said, it appears we went from a surplus of $203,000 to a deficit of $515,000, yes, and that's also with that child nutrition, we'll get back to that. Now, the question is, was it COVID-related? I think that was the $1.7 million variance.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, I think she's referring to the general fund, uh, that last sentence.
Of the, of the middle paragraph.
Uh-huh, yeah, it states that, uh, this resulted in the general fund reporting a $1.7 million dollar, uh, positive budget, uh, variance. And, uh, so I think that would be more of a question for, um, for Ms. Jones, maybe.
I think we're gonna get that answer, um, Ms. Womack, and if we don't, bring it up again for me, okay? Um, I need a pause here, Ms. Womack, Mike Smith is trying to join this call. This is our, uh, one of our speakers. Shall I admit him? Okay. Dr. Mike Smith, this is Sam, oh, I'm muted. I hope you're able to see us, we're still with our auditor at this time. If you're able to hear me, just hang with us and we'll come to you momentarily. I apologize for the interruption, Mr. Smith.
Yes, okay.
You're two, aren't you?
That's right.
Mike, goodness, it's the Smiths up here. Dale, Mike, Smith, welcome, Smithville.
That's right. I'm not, I'm not Dr. Smith.
You're not Dr. Smith, they both are. Uh, thank you again, and we'll let you continue with, where were we, page 12?
Yeah, we, 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 we were on page 12, and, uh, we can, we can quickly finish up there. Um, and reading across the fund balance line, that next-to-last line on page 12, uh, you can see that state public school fund and federal grants funds, neither one of those carry a fund balance. Uh, the district is required to spend those funds as soon as they receive them. Um, and if you look at your restricted revenue fund, it had an ending fund balance of, uh, 977,668. And, uh, that fund balance is primarily restricted for various grants and programs that flow through the district, uh, such as NC3K, Medicaid. Um, your capital outlay fund had an ending fund balance of $1,191,916. Uh, all of that is restricted for capital outlay purposes. And the individual schools fund had an ending fund balance of $722,699. And that basically is the, uh, ending balances of all of the cash accounts of the various individual schools of the district. Okay, any questions on this page before we look at child nutrition? All right, let's go to page, um, it's page 60. Okay, and page 60 shows the revenues and expenditures of the child nutrition program for the year ended June 30th, 2020. And if you look at the, uh, about three-quarters of the way down, the last row that's got, uh, three columns, uh, to it, net change in fund balance. And you can see that the program, uh, incurred a loss for the year, looking at the middle column, of $580,481. Uh, and that basically is like a decrease in fund balance. Um, in the previous year, the program reported a decrease in fund balance of, uh, $111,532. And in 2018, it reported a decrease of $230,000. Uh, the current year decrease in fund balance represents a decline of $469,000, if you compare not 2019 to 2020. Um, now, the program paid zero indirect cost in 2020 compared to $296,000 in 2019. So that really makes that, that decline worse, if you think about it. It's, uh, so really, instead of the $469,000 year-over-year decline, you got to add, uh, almost $300,000 to it. So the, uh, the year-over-year decline was really more like around $800, uh, uh, some thousand. Uh, cash balances in the program decreased $587,000 from about $1.2 million at June 30th, 19, uh, down to around $654,000 at, uh, at June 30th, uh, 2020. Um, you know, the pri- looking, looking at, uh, the two years, the primary area that, that had a decrease was the, uh, federal reimbursements and grants. Um, if you look in, uh, about the middle of the page, under non-operating revenues, you can see the program reported revenue of $3,241,504 from federal reimbursements. If you look at this same report for the prior year, that revenue was $3,994,253. So you had a decrease of about $753,000. Um, and the top number, food sales, uh, $619,880 this year. The previous year, that number was, uh, $688,000. So you had about a $68,000 drop in food sales. So basically, revenues were the primary factor that, uh, that gave rise to that year-over-year decline. Um, expenditures, for the most part, stayed, stayed consistent, except for the, the drop in indirect cost.
You, you would attribute that, or, and even Ms. Jones, you may, well, need to tag in here, you would attribute that to the closure of schools in March, basically a lack of food sales from March to the end of the school year?
That's right. Yeah. And.
Yes, sir.
I would like also to say that that's also because we chose to feed our children who were not in school.
Indeed.
And this was not any school system or the secretary or anybody in this group of clients that helped them. It's because we, the school district, decided to feed our children when we did not have schools in the state. It was school, nobody else. That's basically what it is. Just want, I wanted to be out on record, and that is the reason for the difference, that this school system decided to feed our children.
There was nothing noted that would evidence anything to the contrary.
Thank you.
Um, but, you know, I would just point out that, you know, given the cash level that the program has at, uh, at June 30th, if the program has another year like this past year, the cash will be, you know, it would be about gone. Uh, you know, if that's the case. And I, I've, I've talked to Ms. Jones about this, and she indicated, I think y'all did bring in a, uh, a specialist to, to, to look at the program, and, uh, and, and it sounds like that some, uh, uh, additional revenue, uh, sources or ways to generate more revenue have been found, and, and hopefully, the program's gonna have a much better year this year. So, uh, I guess we'll see.
Indeed.
Yeah. Yeah, but there's no doubt, it's, it's difficult when the, the students aren't in school, trying to, uh, to feed everyone.
Doing the right thing for everybody, and it's, it's just tough.
Yeah, 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 and we, and again, we've, we've seen this problem, you know, at other districts as well, so it's not, not, not just y'all.
Thank you.
Um, but that was, uh, that was pretty much all I had planned to cover, um, uh, out of the, the report. Uh, we also spent a good bit of time going over the individual school records, looking at receipts and disbursements, and, um, we didn't note any, any major issues in that testing. Uh, appears that the bookkeepers are all doing a good job. We typically find some little minor items that we always report to Ms. Jones, and, uh, and that just gives her something to meet with the bookkeepers about and the principals and, uh, and share with them, and just uses as a trainer tool.
They're getting bored.
That, that's right. But, but I think overall, the audit went very smoothly. Uh, I think, you know, everyone we dealt with was very transparent. If we asked for backup, they were able to give us backup. Um, and, you know, I think overall, we were very happy with what we saw from an audit standpoint. And I think, uh, I think Ms. Jones and her staff, they, they, they continue to do a good job of manag- managing the finances and, uh, uh, you know, being sure to, uh, fully utilize all of the state allotments, dollar allotments, uh, position allotments that, uh, that flows through the district and, uh, and again, I think that was all I pretty much planned to cover, unless.
I do have a couple of questions that came in online.
Okay.
Page 16, exhibit six, revenues. Exhibit six, page 16, says revenues under expenditures. Under expenditures. $2,126,787, is that savings for the year?
Yes, that, that's the, that's the increase in fund balance we talked about earlier in your general fund.
So yes, that is the savings for the year.
Yes.
Uh, next question, what was the specific source of the additional $4.6 million in state funding? Was it COVID expense or another purpose? I'm not sure who that question is, who can answer that.
The additional, I guess that was discussed in the NDNA. The additional, I guess that was discussed in the M D N A.
In the state funding? This woman, can you clarify question number four?
Yes, that's on, that's on page seventeen.
Seventeen.
Oh, from the original budget to the final budget, I think, is what she's referring to.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, I think the uh, the district receives a planning allotment from the state public school fund at the, the start of the year. And then, as the year goes on, and Ms. Jones could, could speak to this better than I can, uh, you do get new allotments and uh, and, and the allotments do change. And I think a, a, y'all are approving amendments throughout the year, uh, as those allotments increase.
Ms. Jones, to your knowledge, was that CARES Act funding of some sort or some other source?
No, ma'am, it was not CARES Act. CARES Act funding was, it was about four hundred and some thousand, I believe, so it was, uh, maybe it was CARES Act funding from the state.
Okay.
Cause my head is a little bit muffled.
She's, she's on the back of the room, she says, no, that the CARES Act was some four hundred thousand dollars, and it was federal funding. Uh, that this is, this is specifically referring to state funding. So was it COVID-based funding? She is saying, no, it was not, as various uh, grants and subsidies from the state. Okay, so the answer to that question was no.
Okay, my final question was page eighteen, was extra two point two million dollars of federal funding for COVID-nineteen?
Was the extra two point two million in federal funding? Trying to look at it again, from the original to the final, was that COVID-nineteen-based funding? And the answer is yes, I see the head nod in the back of the room. Yes, that federal funding is COVID-based. Other questions, comments, discussion?
Madam Chairwoman.
I'm sorry, say again?
This is Sharon Womack, I said I had no further questions.
Okay, thank you. I was just waiting for a response, thank you.
I wanna say thank you to uh, uh, Mr. Smith for uh, for all the time you worked hard on this, especially for the last few years I've gotten to know you through the audit process. I wanna say thank you to the advisory committee last year and the board for working diligently to make sure that we got through this, especially our finance department, uh, Ms. Kelly Jones and all of her folks in that department, how hard you worked for our school system. And all of those in our school system who handle our books and do our treasury work. Without you, we couldn't function as a school system. Um, a while ago, I was speaking to, um, we had a decrease in our child attrition, and I didn't have my mic on because I kept having feedbacks. So I wanted to refer that, you know, put it back on the record with the mic on, that that decrease was because we, the school system, decided to feed our children in this county so they would have meals to eat at the start of COVID. I think the public needs to know that and hear that, that that was the decision by administrators and this board to make sure that our child, as much as we could, went hungry. While it may hurt our books a little bit, but a child learns better when they're not hungry.
That's right.
So that's the end of story.
Little brains can't hear over growling tummies. And so it's important that we keep our children fed nutritionally so we can feed them academically.
I know, we ran that decision one bit, putting that in place, and I thank you for pointing that out, it really may hurt us, but it's important. Thanks, sir, and thank you for your work.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Good to see y'all.
Thank you. Okay, there's uh, no action item on this audit report, we're simply receiving the report from Mr. Smith. Um, I feel like I'm on repeating Mr. Smith tonight. But uh, at this time, I have the chairman's report, and I am going to forego my normal chairman's report in favor of bringing in Dr. Smith. This is Dr. Mike Smith, who is a representative of the A B Science, A B C Science Collaborative. Dr. Smith is joining us tonight electronically. And he has been a stalwart, I would say, in the study of transmission of COVID and recommendations and helping school systems to navigate decision-making in this pandemic era. And as I was uh granted the opportunity to speak with him as we were making decisions, I thought it would be worthwhile for him to share some of the work that he's doing and let the public hear some of the guidance that we have de- uh depended on in decision-making. So I will not take any more of your time, sir. If you will take uh the opportunity to introduce yourself, perhaps better than I did, and you certainly have the floor, as long as you want to keep it.
Okay, great, thank you. Are you all okay? Do you all hear me okay?
It's pretty good.
Could be a little louder.
We could be a little louder, I'm not sure actually who has control of that.
On my side, I can just talk louder.
Use your, use your teacher voice.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. Um, if I talk louder, can you hear me clearly? I can shout, is that better?
Yes, that's good, thank you.
Okay, cool. Uh, thank you so much, and I'm just gonna, I put some slides together, so I'm gonna uh, hope that this works. I've done Google enough that, let's see. Okay, oh my goodness, yes, I'm now presenting to everybody, that's awesome. Okay, so um, thank you so much for your, for your time this evening. Uh, my name is Mike Smith, uh, I am the pediatric infectious disease doctor here at Duke. Uh, and I'll be talking to you about the A B C Science Collaborative. And really, this is designed to, to, to give you a little bit of uh the background of the program, share some data, but really see what, what, what questions uh people may have. Um, so uh, yeah, here's a picture of me pre-COVID, when I didn't have as much gray hair. Um, you, you gotta see my credentials here, I'm a pediatric infectious disease doc, but I'm also a dad. Um, I have, I have two children, uh, one who is a preschooler, who's been back in uh in-person preschool. Um, so uh, really since July. So I understand the concerns that parents may have about, about when their kids to be out and about during COVID, so I understand that. I also have a, a ten-year-old who's obviously an older child, who's been in remote learning since March. Uh, and I clearly understand some of the frustrations with remote learning. And, and so uh, I kinda have a nice perspective as a parent, uh, but also uh an expert in infectious diseases and a pediatrics. Um, so just in the next couple of minutes, I wanna kind of talk to you about our program, the A B C Science Collaborative. And I'm part of um a huge team. Uh, basically, we, as a group of pediatricians, feel that um it's our, it's our job, really, to work with uh teachers and school districts and superintendents, um, to keep schools open if possible, if it's possible to do that in a, in a safe way. Uh, and sometimes it is, and sometimes it's not, but, but if it's possible to keep schools open in a safe way, how can we work together to make that happen? Um, so here are the, some of the topics that, that we cover. Uh, we have a website called the A B C Science Collaborative, um, really for a wide variety of, of audiences. Uh, we have some information for parents about how, how we can keep our children safe and healthy at school. We have uh information designed for teachers. Because I will say, as a pedi- as a pediatrician, uh, the good news for uh, for us as educators, I kind of myself as an educator, because I, I, I teach medical students and residents and fellows as well. But the, the good news for us is that children tend to do better with COVID than adults do. However, you have to make sure that's safe for teachers, that's a very important group when you consider reopening schools. So we have some talking points for teachers and, and data about teachers. Uh, we have some materials for principals, uh, and of course, for, for superintendents. Um, and so, as I mentioned, we're a program that, that pairs scientists and physicians with school and community leaders. Over here on the left, you can see that we're, you know, we're funded by the National Institutes of Health. That's important to know, because uh, there's no charge to the district or any of the other fifty-plus districts across the state that we're working with. Uh, as I mentioned, we're a group of public health scientists and physicians, not only from Duke, but also UNC. Um, our goals are threefold, really, we have three main aims. Uh, I'm gonna start here in the middle, that's delivering educational resources for all. Um, again, if you go to our website, A B C Science Collaborative dot org, we have all kinds of basic information, uh, little videos by different members of our study, uh, study team, uh, both in English as well as in Spanish, uh, from basic things early on in the pandemic, why do we need masks, some information about influenza, information about vaccines, lots of things that really anyone across the country uh can look at, whether you're an educator or, or a parent or a teacher. Um, our second goal is, uh, this is kind of more why I'm here today, is our goal, uh, which we call informing evidence-based decision-making. Um, and an important point here is that we, we really wanna inform districts and help districts make decisions about school opening. Sometimes, there've been only a couple instances of this out, out in the media, the, some people have reported, hey, A B C told this district to do this. Um, that is not my goal here, I, I am not gonna tell anybody what they should or should not do. Um, we wanna help districts decide what the best choice for them. And clearly, we'll support districts that are in Plan A, Plan B, or Plan C. Things work a little bit different for each district, uh, although I do have some data to support the safety of those decisions. Um, we have what we call a superintendent lifeline, and basically, we have a bi-weekly meeting with superintendents from all across the state. Uh, we had a meeting uh this morning with Dr. Brian and about fifteen other uh superintendents from your region. We coordinate closely with the state health department, uh, as well as more recently, the CDC, uh, because as you work more with all of you and, and, and learn the important lessons that you all can share with us about how to open schools safely, we can actually use this to help the CDC understand the impact of some of the policies that they create. Uh, and then finally, uh, we have uh really key stakeholders association liaisons, probably in North Carolina, what's important, one is with the N C A. Uh, so that's our second goal. And then our third goal, uh, because, as I mentioned, we are NIH-funded project, uh, Duke is a, is a, is a teaching research institution. Um, we, we consider it a kind of advancing public health and sharing this, uh, so kind of research in the purest sense, sharing what's worked well and what's not, not worked well with schools outside of North Carolina and across the country. So those are really the three goals. Um, here are just some of the, of the groups we partner with, these are some of the, some of the districts that I've worked with personally. Um, uh, and again, there are, there are many, many others. Um, so that's the intro to the program. I really just wanted to tell you about some of our, our key guiding principles. And the message number one is that we know that planning and protocols work. Uh, when we talk about protocol, we talk about the official procedure or a system of rules uh governing something. So you guys probably have protocols through a board meeting that I'm joining. Um, and what we, and we work with districts to kind of build protocols for disease mitigation. And I think what we found is that there's not a single intervention that's perfect at preventing spread, but multiple approaches improve success. And, and this, this is not unique to COVID, you can see this was published back in nineteen ninety. This is kind of a Swiss cheese model, we call it, for preventing disease. So, uh, and again, not COVID, but very similar, uh, physical distance is one. And you see with your first slice of cheese, you got some holes in there. Uh, for COVID, I'm gonna jump ahead to masks. Uh, when you put the mask on top of the physical distance, uh, some of those holes get covered up. When you do the hand washing, so the three W's, that's the third layer of cheese, that, that really doesn't leave much room. And I'll show you some data that suggests that. What I'm really excited about moving forward, and I really have hope, not for next week, not for next month, but by the end of twenty twenty-one, is these vaccines that have come out, which again, in and of itself, vaccines are not gonna be perfect, but they're, so to speak, the fourth level of the cheese. And on top of these other things are gonna make things even safer for schools. I'm sorry, what's our way? Um, some data from across the country and across the world. So this is data from October, um, um, a paper published by Emily Oster, who's an economist at Grand University, has, has, has collected a lot of data on schools across the country. Uh, she's concluded that schools are not super spreaders, uh, they do not infect a pure B major spreaders of COVID-nineteen. And you can see kind of low numbers here, uh, again, from early on in the pandemic, from September. But uh, across forty-seven states, very low level rates of infection. Uh, uh, over here on the right, these new studies from China, France, and Australia. Uh, and you can see the references here, uh, if you wanna re- review these actual articles. But the conclusion is that, that SARS-CoV-2 transmission in schools may be less important in community transmission than initially feared. Now, I do wanna say, the decision back in March to close schools made a lot of sense because other respiratory viruses like influenza, which is by far and away the most common virus prior to this year that, that we saw in the community, we know for sure that that is transmitted by, by children. Children get it in school, they share it in school, they bring it home to their families, uh, and they give it to their parents and grandparents. And, and we assumed COVID would be the same. COVID does not appear to be the same, which is good news when it comes to uh safely opening schools. Um, my last slide that I wanted to share really is looking at some work that we've done in North Carolina. I mentioned that we partner with forty, uh, fifty-four districts across the state. Uh, we have data from about eleven districts who were in Plan B for at least nine weeks. Uh, that includes uh more than ninety thousand children and adults. Um, in that group, um, we worked with the, the school districts to get data, and then all of these infections were, were adjudicated by the local departments of health. We made, in those districts, there were seven hundred and seventy-three primary infections. And when I say primary infection, I'm talking about a community-acquired infection, that whether schooled or open, uh, students and teachers are gonna get COVID from going out to the grocery store, going out to church, seeing family members, playing in their backyards with the neighbors. Um, however, despite the fact that there were seven hundred and seventy-three primary infections, uh, in these ninety thousand children and adults, there were only thirty-two secondary transmission of them. Um, so thirty-two divided by ninety thousand is a very low number. When I'm talking about secondary transmission, I'm talking about disease that was transmitted within the school setting, because that's what the schools can control. And when you look at these cases, it was all due to basically people not adhering with masks and kind of having some pandemic fatigue. Uh, but the idea here is that, uh, you know, school may actually be a safer choice than being out in the community because you have some control over getting kids to wear masks and social distance. So putting this all together, what our group feels, uh, actually, we've shown that, um, in, uh, in the same study, that um, the, the risk of a secondary transmission was not related with levels of COVID-nineteen in the community. Um, we also think that adherence to the three, if you adhere to the three W's, secondary transmission is extremely low. In the cases that we found where there was secondary transmission, there was a clear break in protocol of people not wearing masks. We also know that schools are doing a good job protecting their students and staff. And, and this is not surprising for you, uh, as, as educators. We already heard that you, you take the health and well-being of your students very seriously, and you lost money to provide meals. So we know that you're gonna do a good job protecting your students, as long as you feel it's safe to do so. Um, however, I will say, um, I don't think this is the, the situation for you all yet, but, but some of the districts that we worked with in January, because of quarantine, uh, there just aren't enough bus drivers and staff to keep schools open safely. And some of them had, have had to drop back, uh, do, do temporary remote schooling. I just wanna make sure that, that, you know, if you have friends in other districts, or colleagues in other districts, or heard about this in the media, um, that decision was made not because of increased transmission within the schools, the secondary transmissions I'm talking about, but, but if people get sick over the holidays and can't come to school, you, you just can't open schools safely. Um, so I'm gonna stop there, I believe that's my last slide. I'm happy to take as many questions as you have now. Um, and uh, we have a generic email account, uh, for our project. Um, and happy to take any other questions down the road as they, as they come up. So I'm gonna stop my screen sharing, I think. Did that work? Did I stop my screen sharing so I could look at you?
It did, it did.
Very well.
So, um, at this point, I will open the floor for any questions that you may have for Dr. Smith.
Dr. Smith. Dr. Smith on the screen. You spoke that you worked with the CDC, and there were one of your partners came through this study. With the current guideline from the CDC of ten percent, how would that affect? You, you're talking about decision-making. Well, currently, we stand at an eighteen percent positivity rate, which is eight percent over what the CDC recommends for opening. How would that affect decision-making if you were in our shoes, consent, with, going along with your study at the same time?
Yeah, yeah, so, so you guys are in a tough position, because I just, I just gave you an opinion that is based on a research study that we're doing. And the, the state and the CDC are saying something differently. So the whole per- uh, uh, and, and as I mentioned, I'm part of a big team. Dr. Damien Benjamin is the, is the lead doc for this team, and Dr. Kenesha Zimmerman. They have a meeting with the CDC to share this data, and they've had discussions about asking them, firmly the point that I just made to you all, which is, I, we personally think that the metrics that should be used to open bars and restaurants and things like that, where adults primarily congregate, those roles, they should be different for opening schools. And if you look closely at some of the, the, the subtle changes in CDC guidelines, um, last month, uh, in part because of some discussions that our group had with them, they did kind of tweak their statement a little bit to say that school should be the last part of deciding to close. So that's something that, that, uh, I don't, I don't wanna say it was directly, you know, our work, but when we talked to them about this, they agreed to do that. Um, so we're, we're, what we hope to do is use these data to help shape, or at least have a discussion about this point that should the, the, the community metrics, again, for, for opening things like bars and restaurants and things like that, can we use these other metrics, which is secondary di- disease transmission within schools as the key metric for keeping schools open? Now, again, now, this is where I'm, 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 this is my opinion, this is what our research suggests. Uh, I'm not saying do that now, because you can't necessarily, you have to follow what the, what the local public health guidelines are saying. But we, we, we firmly believe this. But we, we, we firmly believe as, and, and as pediatricians, that makes a lot of sense to us, and I'm, I'm happy to, to see what you think about that or how, how that resonates with you.
Dr. Smith, one of our, uh, two of our members are actually attending online with you, and one question comes from Ms. Sutton. She asked, she said, I understand transmission from children to adults is very low, but is that the same for all ages of students, or is it different with older high school students?
Yeah, so great question. So, uh, I will say, based on the data that we have so far, and, and remember, not, um, there are many more schools in Plan B in the younger groups than, than in the high school ages. So, um, the, the ninety thousand number that I used, uh, shrinks down a little bit in terms of the, the sample size, if you're just looking at high school students. So with the caveat that it's a smaller sample size, there's still zero cases of, uh, student-to-teacher transmission. And, and actually, there are, there are, there was no difference, I can't think of the numbers off the top of my head, but there were only thirty-two, uh, secondary transmission events total, and they were kind of spread equally across the age groups. So there was not a predominance of high school kids versus middle, versus middle school, versus, um, versus elementary school kids. It was really, um, you know, where, where was the, the break in the mask? So, per, perhaps you could say the high school kids, because it's age-appropriate for them to not follow rules, they were doing it potentially, versus some of the younger kids, the pre-K and K fell off and they're just running around and they don't know any better. So I think it's more related to the masking itself than, um, particular, uh, you know, increased risk of transmission based on age. Now, I will say, um, certainly, the data would support if we all go around and don't social distance and don't wear masks, that rates of transmission are definitely to be higher the older that you get. But if everyone's wearing masks and social distancing as is requested, um, that can really mitigate those age differences in, in transmission. So I hope that answers that, that, that question. And again, you know, of, of course, there was a big break over the holidays, so, um, I'm fully aware that things may be different, uh, with, with the cases that we are right now, but so far, we've worked, um, based on the schools that we've spoken to that, that are still in Plan B, um, uh, you know, we've not seen increased number of cases at this point, uh, since Christmas holidays.
Would you, um, I don't want to put words in your mouth, would you feel it's safe to say that if a school is mandating masking, is monitoring the social distancing, and is reducing the quantity of people in the building, would be one of the safer places as opposed to the remainder of society, where the rules have different levels of enforcement?
I, I, I do believe that, uh, I, I do think our data, our data show that. Um, and so that's, yes, I'm, I'm, I'm actually, I'm, I'm comfortable with that statement. I think, I think schools are a safer choice than, than not being in school from, from infectious disease standpoint. And, and it took me some time to come around to this. You know, when we started this work, I thought COVID was gonna be like influenza, which is definitely spread in schools by kids, but, you know, the younger you are, kind of the worse it is. Um, you know, having, having, I'm sure many other people, uh, on, on the board and listening have preschoolers that remember, like, I was, I never missed a day of work until my kid was in preschool, and I thought COVID was gonna be the same way. And I thought the question that we'd be sitting here in January twenty twenty-one having would be, well, how many cases of COVID transmission in the schools are we willing to accept to keep schools open? That's what I thought, that's how I thought this whole project was gonna play out when we started it, uh, last summer. But in fact, what we're seeing is being in school seems to be protective. So the question is not, how many cases are you willing to accept to keep schools open? But, hey, look, it, it actually seems like you can do in-person education and actually reduce cases at the same time. So it really does seem like a win-win situation.
I do have one more question that came in from one of our online persons that said, is there a community positivity rate that you think would be indicative of, of the decision to go back to virtual school?
So, to, to kind of reiterate my talking point from before, um, I, I, I'm sure you, you could get me to get to a number that's high enough that it's just safe, kind of not to go outside your house for anything, but, but I think that, so I, so they're probably use that number, but I, we've really tried not to establish that number, as much as I understand everyone wants to have that number. Because, again, um, what I think our data have shown are that, that, that's really the wrong number to look at for, for deciding to go, that, that, that's the wrong number to look at for virtual versus, uh, in-person school. It's, you, you know, you, you could have, uh, no cases in, in the, in the community, but if you have five transmissions in your school, that means you should not, you, you might not want to be in in-person school, even though rates are low in the community. Um, I think the question is what's going on in your school? And, and regardless of what's going on in the community, if you can continue following the three W's and have, you know, low rates, uh, or zero rates in your school, um, I think the community level is, is less relevant. So, um, I, I, I know you all want me to answer that question, but I, I can't really do it because I don't think that number exists.
Other comments or questions for Dr. Smith? You don't have a crystal ball that you're reading that you'd like to share any sayings for us, do you?
I wish. The one thing I will say is that, you know, and, and feel free to jump into the other questions, though. Um, I, I, I'm optimistic, and, and I have hope for, I have hope for all of us, really, because I think, I think, I think the data show us that school is safer than we thought, uh, and these, these vaccines are coming, maybe not as fast as, as we hoped. So, uh, twenty twenty-one, the next couple of months may be rough, but I, I do see light at the end of the tunnel, and that's what, what I really want to share, which is, you know, working together and, and, you know, Dr. Brian knows, we're, we're happy to, our group is happy to, to kind of help you think through things as you make these decisions. Um, I don't have a crystal ball, I'm optimistic, but the, the crystal ball that I see, maybe goes one or two days ahead of time, is gonna be a rough next, next few weeks, I think, to months, but the things are gonna get better.
Thank you very much. Is there any other question for Dr. Smith? If not, I would like to extend my gratitude and the gratitude of this board for you taking the time out of your evening to join us and to share some of the insights that you have. This is my, I guess, my chairman's report. I've been asked time and time again, through various emails, Facebook messages and so forth, what in the world are we thinking as a board? And I promise you that every one of those emails, every one of those messages is read. Um, I started out with the great ambitions of a new board chair to answer every email individually and personally, and I quickly found myself buried. I think if you just took a look at the sheer quantity of public comments tonight, you can understand why it's almost impossible to respond individually to each comment. And so I assure you, if you wonder what are we thinking, we are thinking the same things you are and the same things everyone else is, and we hear every comment, every concern, and it weighs on us as we have to make these decisions. We know that we cannot make everyone happy, and I just, as the, the new board chair, um, I want to say that I'm a communication major, and I have endeavored to ensure that this board is as communicative with our people as we can be, and that our people feel that they can communicate with us. And so if nothing else, I know we don't give individual, uh, response to comments made this evening, but I will say, from our students who have taken the time to write in and hear, have their voices heard, to our faculty, our staff, our community members, I do thank you for having the courage to put your...